I get to use the gavel today. We're going to call this meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here to this council meeting, city council meeting for Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Are we still waiting for Mr. Mayor?
Is it iPad? There's no waiting room. Is he on his iPad? There he is. We're good.
Okay, great. Thank you. So a portion of this city council meeting is conducted by teleconference in that Mayor Williamson is in Honolulu, Hawaii, and is participating today by teleconference. In accordance with the Brown Act, his remote location has been identified in the agenda for this meeting. Mayor Williamson, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Great. So please go ahead and answer the following questions. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Where were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Was the agenda posted 24 hours prior to this special meeting at the location where you are?
Yes.
Is your location accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate from your location if they wish to do so?
Yes.
Is any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting? Or otherwise, address any agenda item for this meeting?
No.
Can everyone clearly hear Mayor Williamson? Yes. The Brown Act requires that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting be taken by roll call. So I'm going to hand it over to Clementine to take role and make announcements.
Councilmember Barbara.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia, Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Rash.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And information on participating in this meeting and providing your public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on the agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it is your turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees must keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting. And thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you so much, Clementine. And I can't remember who did the pledge of allegiance last time.
I did.
Okay, you did. All right. So how about we bring it over to Councilmember Smith?
You bet. Awesome. Please stand and join us. I go into my United States Republic which stands one nation indivisible liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Smith. Okay, so with that, we're going to pass it over to Nat to receive the draft 2025 economic development strategy and provide feedback on economic development roadmap.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Garcia, and good afternoon, Mayor, who's in Hawaii, and all of you, members of the city council. We're very excited today to have the 2025 draft economic development strategy to present to you today. First, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge those who made this document possible. The edits from our city manager, Hans Ouslar, who isn't able to make it this afternoon. But also our data gathering done by Maya, our intern from Middlebury Institute, as well as proofreading from both Mark and Clementine in our office. And of course, the data from the finance team that we're going to be sharing with all of you this afternoon. What we'll be sharing with you today is a draft economic development strategy. And I'd like to share that it's just that, a first draft document. And it's intended, it's intended not to necessarily be all encompassing, but what we did try to do is include data that's typically included in a economic development strategy, as well as recommendations that's based on our staff experience here in Monterey, as well as our expertise in the economic development field. We know there is more work to do and more refinement that needs to be done, and we are looking forward to gathering feedback from all of you. We're also looking forward to gathering feedback from members of the community and our community partners, who, this is the first time they've seen the draft document. And thanks for all of you in the audience who are here and watching at home. Most presentations, we ask for questions and answers after the presentation. In this case, because we have several slides to get through, lots of data to present, analysis, draft strategies, and this is a study session. I am inviting all of you, members of the council, if you have questions as we go through each of the slides or on the data, feel free to let me know, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have along the way. Okay? And appreciate, appreciate your support. All right. The first item here is, the first overview is to share with you that economic development is a council priority, and it has been for a number of years, but very evident, most recently on January 29, when you all met as part of the council goal-setting workshop at Schultz Park Center. And fiscal stewardship, economic development was tied as number five for a priority area. It was also identified as a significant opportunity in the city council SWAT analysis that was completed that same day. And then, again, a reminder that today's study session and the draft strategy is a first step. So what are we going to be covering today? So we're looking forward to the feedback, as I mentioned, from all of you, as well as the business community and industry leaders and our residents. We'll cover the introduction, we'll go through some data points, employment and city revenue. We'll talk a little bit about the various financing tools that are available to us as the city of Monterey. We'll discuss the vision and proposed goals. A brief overview of the SWAT analysis. A list of stakeholders that we hope to engage through the process, as well as economic development strategies, proposed implementation schedule, and then take some time to gather feedback from all of you. So let's begin by answering the question, what is economic development? And why do communities invest in economic development? The graphic here is from the California Association for Local Economic Development. It's an organization that many economic development directors and professionals belong to here in the state. And it shows you that economic development work, and the goal is to provide the resources needed, help businesses and industry overcome barriers, and identify and implement a strategy to help businesses be successful and to help industry be successful. And what that means in return is that those businesses and industry contributes towards taxes, payroll, supporting families, the social fabric of our community that helps fund all the different things that we enjoy here in Monterey. Our parks, our beaches, our infrastructure, public safety, police, fire, housing funds, quality of life, and then also public employees who provide that support through and through again. And that's, that's an overview. What does economic development look like here in Monterey? Well, economic development is economic vitality. It means a higher quality of life for all of us. It helps fund the dollars that pays for those services that we rely on, the services that, that we love. That includes not only the public safety, but roads and parks and beaches, our natural environment, sports center, library, and a responsive government. We also know, and all of you are very aware, that the heartbeat of our economy here in Monterey is the hospitality industry. Tourism remains and will continue to be the top economic driver for our community and our quality of life. And we have great partners like the Monterey County Hospitality Association and strong organizations like C Monterey that serves as our destination marketing organization. Over the years, our city, we've supported economic development in a variety of ways, such as supporting destination marketing, providing opportunities for investments, and collaborating with business and industry. First and foremost, you can see as part of council's approval of the budget each year, the Monterey Conference Center is one example of how we invest in hospitality. And our investments in the conference center help definitely pay dividends towards our ability to provide service in the community. We have other key industries that are very important, and we'll talk about that. Includes healthcare, military, education. And today, we have a great opportunity here to implement, or to at least start the process to implement a long-term economic development strategy that supports residents as well as our community. And the strategy should strive to ensure that the high quality of life that our residents expect can continue and that we provide a vibrant and thriving experience that will keep visitors here for years to come. This is a model of strategies to accelerate economic development. And again, this comes from the California Association for Local Economic Development, known as CalEd. And the first strategy, first step is to have a realistic vision and understand our competitive advantages and disadvantages. We've taken the first stab, and we'll share with you today what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that we see. We'll assess what we have, the assets, infrastructure, partners, real estate, talent pool. Third is to identify champions who can help communicate and also implement the vision and goals. Fourth, create a strategic action plan with goals, timelines, responsibilities, assignments, and performance measures. This is a draft version of that. And then also create a business-friendly climate through policies and actions. Our key industries, first and foremost, hospitality. We talked about the military. We'll discuss education as well as healthcare. Let's take a quick look at employment data. And employment data is helpful because it gives us a sense of our workforce who serves in the various roles. This graph here on the left shows you, so I'll take a quick step back. We have 24,944 individuals employed in the city of Monterey in non-military industries. The majority of the workers in Monterey commute from outside of the city. So that's the, the graphic here with the arrow showing the 21,865 workers who commute in. And then 3,079 workers live and work within the city boundaries. And then we have 8,050 residents who commute out for work. So this gives you an overview, and all of these graphs are in the draft study. There's also an overview here, a pie chart showing you the employment in Monterey. And as you can see, accommodation and food service accounts for roughly 20% of employment in the city. We also have 26.6% is healthcare and social assistance, with Montage Health and being the center of, of healthcare in our region and on the Monterey Peninsula. All of the doctors and nurses and support staff who work not only at community hospital, but also at the Ryan Ranch campus and other facilities make up those 6,272 healthcare and social workers. That includes dentists and others in the profession. We also have management of companies, enterprises, 3%. Education, we talked about at 8.6%. Professional, scientific, technical, 9%. Really quickly, we'd like to, like to share with you some more information on revenue data. And this one really hits home, I think in my opinion, about how much we rely on tourism and hospitality in the city of Monterey. The, you have a stacked bar chart here. On the left is the revenue from the city of Monterey. You'll see property tax accounts for just under 15% of revenue for the city. Sales tax at 14.87%. Hotel tax, TOT, at 28%. And then we have other revenues at 29.29%. Those are mostly fees and services. And that also includes not only sports center fees, but all the fees that Carmel, Pacific Grove, San City pay for fire services that we provide to those agencies. So that's one of the reasons why other revenue is so high. The typical city in California, and this is according to the League of California Cities, property tax is the number one largest source of revenue at 47%, followed by sales tax at 23% and then TOT at 7%. It tells us that our reliance on hotel tax and on hotel revenue and hospitality-driven revenue is, is really life, life or death for us as a, as a community when it comes to economic development and our ability to provide service. Other cities don't rely on that. And that's one of the reasons why during the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020, we were listed among, by the California State Auditor as top 11 cities most adversely impacted by COVID. Because tourism went away, people stopped traveling, and we saw not only our hotel tax revenue go down, but our sales tax revenue go down. So we were up there with Anaheim and South Lake Tahoe and other hospitality-focused communities in seeing major revenue loss. Meanwhile, other cities like Salinas and even Seaside and others were not impacted as greatly. In fact, they actually saw revenue increases because of ARPA money that came in. The ARPA money that we received, the Recovery Act funds, only recovered a small percentage of the revenue loss that we experienced. So this highlights, you know, we always said, you know, we rely so much on hospitality. The pandemic emphasized how hard that was for us. Again, if you have any questions, feel free to speak up. Yes, please.
A question.
Yes, Dr. Barber.
So I understand that healthcare and social organizations were a part of, were actually first, and then hospitality was second when we were looking at the chart before. So if you go back to where you just were with the taxes, where, where are their revenues, where are their taxes and revenues shown on this chart?
That's right. And it's really interesting, and I'm so glad you asked that question, Dr. Barber. So even though employment, there are fewer employment numbers in accommodation and food service on the hospitality side. The, the translation here is that the city revenues rely on the hotel tax and sales tax. So the healthcare workers, just as one example, Montage Health, which is a nonprofit, a great organization, nonprofit healthcare institution, not private, they don't provide any property tax to the city of Monterey. They're tax exempt. They're tax exempt. So we receive 0% of property tax from them. So, and while they're, they benefit and their workers might spend money in restaurants that help support the sales tax. So that's, that's maybe where some of the revenue might be is from the, the wages that are received from those who work in those industries, who then spend money in our restaurants or go to our barber shops and, and buy services here in the city. But it does not represent a large chunk, if any, of direct revenue that we can.
There's no direct revenue.
There's no direct revenue. It's all indirect.
Trying to transfer the different pieces from the chart.
Exactly. That's, that's correct. In the case of hotels as an example, not only do they bring in, in direct 100% of the TOT, the hotel tax that comes in, comes all to us. But also, a lot of the restaurants, the hotels that have restaurants, they generate sales tax from the restaurant fees. They also generate sales tax from the, when they have food and beverage concessions and events, and they sell plates of lunches for $50 a head. That's sales tax directly into the city's coffers. So when you look at the top 25 sales tax revenue generators, quite a few of them are hotels, surprisingly. Not, and you wouldn't normally think, well, how does a hotel bring in sales tax? That's how they bring in sales tax. And again, property tax is a challenge for us. We, we love Montage, they're a great partner. But there is $0 in property tax that we get from Montage. And that's one of the challenges when organizations like Montage and other nonprofits buy out land that's formerly private, such as Ryan Ranch. It goes from a private hand to a, to a nonprofit. We go from a taxable building to a non-taxable building. And that means reduced property tax revenue and increased reliance on hotel tax for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Other, other, this gives the data in a different lens here. TOT, again, showing 30%, sales tax 15, just another way of presenting the data. You know, what's really interesting too is to look at where does hotel tax revenue generate? Where is it generated by area? And you'll see here that Henry Row accounts for 28% of the hotel tax generation. Old Town and Downtown accounts for 28.4%, followed by Munrus Avenue and Abrego Street, 12%. And then North Fremont, 6.6%. Other accounts for roughly 24.9% of revenue. And if you're wondering where other is, I can see Vice Mayor Garcia. One example is the Hyatt, for example. That's the Hyatt Regency Monterey, which is on Old Golf Course Road over by Sloane Avenue and, and that area that's not in North Fremont, it's not in Munrus. It's under the other category. Hampton Inn, for example, over by Lake Roberts is just another sample. Hilton Garden Inn, there are a handful, several large hotels that.
The Tides as well.
The Tides, another great example. So a lot of large hotels that account for that quarter. Okay. Let's take a look in terms of, and this is the, the chart that you'll see that presents the information a little differently as well. But yeah, Henry Row in downtown, quite significant there. For a moment, I'd like to share with you some data on regional hotel room inventory. We've talked about it a little bit, how the city currently has 4,713 hotel rooms with 40 new hotel rooms proposed with the Abbott Hotel by IHG project that's on North Fremont Street. And we also know that there are a number of new hotels that are being built in the area. Some examples include the Kimpton Hotel in Pacific Grove that will be coming online later this year. In Sand City, there's the AC Hotel, or sorry, Courtyard by Marriott, as well as the Residence Inn by Marriott and, and others. And while these new hotels in the county may mean more opportunities for visitors to enjoy the region and maybe shop and dine here in the city of Monterey, it also means that those visitors are not contributing to those critical hotel tax dollars here in Monterey. You know, one example is if someone is staying in Marina at one of the Spring Hill Suites, for example, their room is, room rate might be $250 a night. They're, they're bringing in direct revenue to the city of Marina, $43. But if they spend $20, if all they're spending in Monterey is $20 at the aquarium gift shop, our direct revenue is 50 cents from that sales tax. So that's just, just one example. And that competition from the newer hotels means an increase, that an increase in supply may affect the demand in the city. We do know that rising tide lifts all boats, but there is more competition that is coming to us. In the next, in the future, we're looking at in Seaside, 718 more rooms. In Salinas, 393 more rooms. Sand City, 342 more rooms. In Marina, 200 more rooms. And in Pacific Grove, 225 more rooms. And our projection, projected increase of new rooms is only 40. I do want to acknowledge though, there are, there are several hotels here in Monterey that have invested significant dollars, millions of dollars in renovations that has helped keep our inventory fresh and new. And examples, I think Janine's here from Portola Hotel and others, Hyatt made major investments as well. But there's an opportunity for other hotels in our region to, to make investments also. You know, our voter initiative doesn't allow for new hotels, but there is an opportunity for older hotels to be renovated or modernized. And we know that many of the visitors attending events like Pro-Am and Car Week, they're staying not only in Marina, but they're staying outside of our region, outside of our county in Santa Cruz, Watsonville, Gilroy, and Morgan Hill. Santa Cruz has a new luxury beachfront hotel and spa that's opening up later this year. And it features meeting spaces for nearly 1,000 attendees. We learned last week, the city of San Luis Obispo is looking into plans to build their new conference center that would directly compete with the Monterey Conference Center. The county of San Luis Obispo is leaving their county courthouse building. And so they're, they're actively working on plans to build a conference center in downtown Slough that will compete with us directly. Pismo Beach is looking at the same thing. They, they see the same thing that we realized in, in the, many decades ago, that, that midweek travel is, is critical to, to economic vitality. Let's take a look at sales tax. The second highest source of revenue here in the city is, is sales tax and accounts for 45.5% of the city's general fund. As some of you might know, 62% of sales tax is paid by non-residents. And that's not only tourists, but those who might live in Seaside or Carmel and Pacific Grove and shop here locally. And it does emphasize our reliance on funding from non-residents to pay for city services. We also, in addition to the, the funding in sales tax that we receive, the 15.528 million in sales tax to the general fund each year, we also receive 11.849 million dollars in Measure S revenue directly from sales tax as well. And the majority of sales tax comes from restaurants and hotels, followed by general consumer goods. State and county pools, if you're wondering what state and county pools is, that includes all of the online sales. So when we go on our Amazon app and buy something and it gets shipped here, it, in Monterey County, gets divided among all of the municipalities in the county. Based on a formula, we get a share of that. Business and industry, followed by food and fuel and service stations, auto and transportation, food and drug, building construction, transfers identified as well. And a lot of these categories continue to be, there's more competition again and again, not only from big boxes, it's always been, but online sales. And revenue that cities always thought were tried and true, such as gas revenue. One of the reasons why gas is so expensive is there's sales tax on gas on top of gas tax. And when Costco opened up the gas station in Seaside, technically across from their Costco wholesale in Sand City, we saw a drop in, in sales tax revenue from gas stations. Yes, Councilmember Rasch?
Nat, on the 11.8 million dollars of 23, 24 Measure S sales tax, adjusting for inflation, where did, where do you think that puts us compared to pre-COVID?
That's a great question. I don't have, and our finance director is, is in meetings, I know, this evening. I can get that information for you. I, I don't, I don't want to guess and give you the wrong answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we, I have the impression we were, we weren't fully recovered from COVID in that year, but doing pretty well, bouncing.
We're, we're doing pretty well in projections from HDL. We, we meet with them every quarter. They're the consulting firm that provides sales tax advisory services to us. They tell us sales tax is plus or minus, you know, between 2% to 3% increases year over year. We're anticipating looking into the next year, recognizing that there is some instability in the economic forecasting.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry to follow up with Jean. What's the total sales tax from 2024? Or, or, you know, I don't want to split the, the year or the fiscal year, but our last reported 12 months, what was the total?
I can get that information to you. We wanted to compare apples and apples, so we included the fiscal, only fiscal years, but I don't have that readily, I don't have that at my fingertips, unfortunately. And here is a, a donut pie chart showing the sales tax revenues by industry. And then by location, if you're interested, very fascinating numbers. Old Town generates 21% of sales tax revenue, followed by Del Monte Center at 18.5%. Del Monte Center, they, just as you may have heard, got purchased by Federal Realty. And our community development department director, Kim Cole, and her team have met with them. They're excited about plans for, for that site and that's location in the future. Looking at other districts, Henry Row generates 18%, followed by New Monterey, 7.9%, North Fremont, 5.9%, Fisherman's War, 4.9%, and then other 23.5%. And again, other includes Del Monte. Boulevard Corridor, Hyatt is an example, which generates quite a bit of sales tax revenue. Okay, any questions so far on that one? Okay. And then here's the, the pie chart that, that shows you how that's divided. So a good, we relied, truly every business district is important to the city when it comes to our, our economic vitality. So this, this goes back to a little bit of what Dr. Barber, you'd, you'd asked, and at least my response to your question, you know, in terms of property tax. And many folks, and I think counsel, you know, but for the public, the city of Monterey only receives six cents of every dollar collected in property tax. So not only is our property tax base quite small because of nonprofits and education and military that are non-taxable and don't provide direct revenue to the city, but, but also the dollars that we pay as Monterey taxpayers in property tax, if we own property, is only six, six cents goes to, goes to the city of Monterey. The majority goes to schools. 15 cents goes to the county. Nine cents goes to special districts, like the airport district and mosquito abatement are examples. And then successor agencies, 8%, cities, 6%. This is a graph that, or a graphic rather, that is provided by the County of Monterey Tax Assessor's Office. And so when, when you look at considering Monterey's median home price is 1.3 million and a tax of 1.11%, we receive 800, the city of Monterey receives $865.80 in property tax from a typical homeowner. And, and so that's, so that's important to also note, as I shared with you, that military organizations, nonprofit, educational, and religious institutions, governmental agencies, and nonprofit medical facilities are all important to our community. But we don't receive any direct property tax revenue from them. And, and so that's, that's one of the reasons why we have such a small property tax base. Okay. We'll move on to business license data. And you'll see here, this is strictly number of business licenses, no matter how small or large the business is, whether it's a photography studio or the Apple Store at Del Monte Center, it counts as one business license. And business license tax makes up a good chunk of change, 3.8% of the total general fund revenue. That's $3.8 million in revenue. And the retail sector comprises the largest number of independent businesses in the city. And while many of the city's registered businesses are small, professional service providers and consulting and photography and event planning, we do know that healthcare, lifestyle, personal care, construction represents a significant part of the workforce here in the city of Monterey. Okay, let's, let's talk about financing tools. So I know council members may be interested in learning about, and the public as well. What are different ways in which we can fund infrastructure investments to support economic development in Monterey? The first one is to capture value. And historically, as you know, cities have used redevelopment agencies to value capture zoning. And, and that's upzoning to allow for more density. And the idea behind that being that as revenues increase, those increasing tax revenues go back to, to support the, the district or those areas and, or the redevelopment agency. With the cut of redevelopment, redevelopment agencies with, by Governor Jerry Brown a number of years ago, there are newer infrastructure investment tools that are available that we'll talk about today. One, one option is to capture value by charging for higher density zoning to pay for public infrastructure and amenities. As part of the state-approved housing element, we've already upzoned a number of areas to increase density. But we should continue to look at perhaps other opportunities to, to create taxable value. And so that's, that's important as well. Post-redevelopment, some of the new tax increment financing tools have include enhanced infrastructure financing districts. This uses property tax increment revenues that's generated within a specific geographical area. There's also CRIAs, which is the Community Reval, Revitalization, I'm sorry, and Investment Authorities. They have a greater emphasis on affordable housing with low and moderate income set aside requirements. And, and then also we have a tool called Climate Resilience Districts. And these help fund sustainable infrastructure, green spaces, and renewable energy solutions that help mitigate climate risks such as flooding, heat waves, sea level rise. Again, we think these are all tools that we should explore. And as we identify key geographic areas to focus on, whether that's Alvarado Street, Cayenne Principale, North Fremont Street, Lighthouse Avenue. On the federal and state funding side, although we know federal funds are becoming more and more restrictive, the Inflation Reduction Act offers tax credits and rebates for individuals and also to organizations for tax-exempt financing for projects that help support private sector investment. And the Bipartisan Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act also provides funding for infrastructure. So that includes roads, bridges, transportation, climate resiliency, brownfields cleanup, and electric vehicle infrastructure. Several federal grants have been nixed, so that's something to be mindful of as well. On the state funding side, there's relatively new funds. Proposition four is a big one. This is the Parks Environment, Energy, and Water Bond of 2024. It generates $10 billion statewide, and so we may be able to take advantage of some of that. There's also the Infill Infrastructures Grant Catalyst Program that offers $1 million to $30 million awards for affordable housing, housing infrastructure, as well as transportation. And then there's the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program. Those fund anywhere between $1 million to $7.5 million for infill projects and gap funding for infrastructure and affordable residential and mixed-use projects. Some of the other local mechanisms that are out there, local sales tax measures. Many of you know, you know, we're almost at a cap now with the sales tax measures. We have Measure G, which is the half-cent sales tax that was adopted in March 2020. There's also Measure XS, which sunsets in 2027. And we're going to have conversations with council in the next few months about revenue sources for infrastructure like roads and others. And then capital improvement programs. We've talked about how the city of Monterey, we invest roughly 2% of our general fund to our capital improvement programs. Meanwhile, other cities invest anywhere between 13% to 25% to support parks, facilities, and often CIPs, and other cities fund business districts. So that's a potential source of revenue. We should look at general obligation bond measures potentially, business improvement districts. We have those in Monterey already to help fund streetscape improvements and maintenance. And then tourism improvement districts is, is one potential as well. We have a very strong tourism improvement district, as you know, that was recently renewed and led by Rob O'Keefe with C Monterey. And, you know, one opportunity is to look at increasing the TID, ensuring that we provide funding for tourism marketing. But in communities like Napa Valley, for instance, their Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District, a quarter of their TID budget is retained by individual cities and the County of Napa for destination-specific tourism improvement activities. That doesn't include just marketing, but also streetscape improvements, special events programming. That doesn't include just marketing, but also streetscape improvements, special events programming, local shuttle programs, trails, signage and other infrastructure that specifically enhances the visitor experience. So those are potential options to explore as well. All right, let's take a look at the general plan and existing economic development goals. So this actually comes from our existing general plan that has goals A through E. The first one, goal A, to maintain and encourage a strong economic base that's provides tax income for city services and jobs. It discusses encouraging civic and business decisions that provide taxes that support city services to residents and provide employment opportunities to residents. The second goal is to expand the economy of Monterey by building on existing strengths and emphasizing the natural and historic features of the city. Goal C is to continue Monterey's role as the business and employment center of the Monterey Peninsula. Goal D, to encourage housing and mixed use housing to meet the needs of business. And goal E, to continue to provide exceptional public safety to assure that residents and, and visitors are not discouraged from visiting or shopping here in Monterey. Here's the proposed vision for the economic development strategy. So we're getting into, hopefully we've held, I've held your attention a little bit and we're getting into the vision and the goals and into the meat of the report. Monterey will maintain its outstanding quality of life for residents by strengthening the community's economic and fiscal vitality, embracing its historic charm, protecting the coastal environment, supporting affordable housing through the community's workforce and fostering sustainable tourism through innovation and partnerships. It covers the importance of the fiscal vitality of the community as well as one of the council's core values, which is protecting the environment, something that we're very proud of here. What are the proposed goals? So we've divided them into five different sections. One, for us to remain a competitive place and maintain a strong, high quality of place here in Monterey for visitors to visit and eat and, and explore. Maintaining collaborative partnerships. Having continued sustainable redevelopment opportunities and foster those. Diversify the economy and then have affordable workforce housing opportunities. So let's, let's start with the, the first one, remaining competitive in the hospitality marketplace through equality of place. This goal, the idea behind this is to foster the modernization and increased appeal of some of our outdated amenities and assets. That includes hotels, retail areas and business districts. That includes, that covers all of the districts that you represent. North Fremont, Munneris Avenue, Old Monterey, Lighthouse Avenue, Henry Row, Fisherman's Wharf, 10th Street. The second, on redevelopment, sustainable redevelopment. Prioritize redevelopment and adaptive reuse of underutilized properties to meet economic needs and identify solutions to support those efforts. The third, having a business retention, attraction and promotion through collaborative partnerships. So continuing to build on those strong relationships that we have with associations, perhaps exploring relationships that we don't have with the commercial real estate brokers, business districts, industry associations and our destination marketing organization. Economic diversification. This is about continuing to focus on and retaining the region's existing economic strengths in the field of hospitality, military, education and healthcare while exploring new growth industries, especially in areas of high wage jobs that support these sectors. And then last but not least, affordable workforce housing solutions. Develop strategies to address the current lack of workforce housing affordability that hinders the attraction and retention of talent in all industries. You'll notice in this economic development draft strategy that we're somewhat light on the workforce housing solutions because a lot of that is outlined in our detailed housing element that council has already approved and reviewed and will be talking about more later this year. So let's go through a brief SWOT analysis. You're, you're all familiar and went through the exercise recently, but the idea is for us to build on our strengths, explore where do we have opportunities, where are our weaknesses and address them and try to mitigate the threats that exist. So some of the strengths that we have, a premier tourism destination. We have strong heritage tourism assets, continuing to support our small city character, coastal community with all the assets, beaches, trails, Fisherman's Wharf, the Henry Row, access to the Marine Sanctuary, the diversity of amenities and visitor types. We have a strong military presence and partnerships with NPS, DLI, Naval Support Activity Coast Guard Station, the Conference Center with business serving facilities, educational institutions, medical industry, great access to and from Monterey Regional Airport and destinations beyond. Plentiful parking downtown in our East and West garages, the walkability of our business districts. We have, we are known to have an outstanding public safety departments with police and fire. We have Ryan Ranch Business Park. A lot of communities don't have those office park type uses. Strong partnerships with business, community, industry associations, council support for business groups and a depth of knowledge in the planning office. And I'll also add depth of knowledge in the, the property management office as well, which, who, who you all work with fairly closely. The council support for business groups is one that we put in here because we recognize that all of you serve as liaisons to the business associations and advocate on their behalf. And thank you for that. Weaknesses. As an organization on economic development, high cost of living is our biggest weakness. It means that our businesses have a hard time finding qualified people to work because the cost of living is too high. That applies to the city of Monterey as well, and you, you understand that. Limited funding for infrastructure improvements and business district amenities. That includes Fisherman's Wharf updates and Wharf two repairs. We have an aging hotel stock. Some of our shopping centers are older and as well as retail and restaurants. We have aging infrastructure. Some of that includes sidewalks, landscaping, signage, streetlights, street banners and business districts and corridors. Merchandising in business storefronts that may not attract browsing or discovery shopping. The idea is we want folks to visit a business district and stay there and stroll. And, and that means creating environment and the city plays a role in that with the infrastructure that we provide. Limited availability of land for new development. We do have reliance on tourism and hospitality sectors. We have limited promotional and marketing efforts in some business districts and areas. Our amazing business associations do a great job, but they only have so many resources as, as small nonprofits. Commercial real estate vacancies in some areas. We're seeing more vacancies in Alvarado Street now, Lighthouse Avenue, Ryan Ranch and the office space market. There's retail leakage across various categories. What retail leakage means is you have Monterey residents who, they can't find a hardware store, for example, here in Monterey to, to buy their supplies. So they go to Home Depot in Seaside or one of the two Ace Hardwares in Pacific Grove because they can't find anywhere in Monterey to shop and, and buy those goods. That's retail leakage. And then limited financial resources for a robust economic development office and staffing. You all know, we don't have a formal economic development office right now and we split those duties between planning and between property management and the city manager's office. Opportunities, lots of opportunities to look at. We have opportunities to explore EIFDs we discussed that can help fund new streetlights, other amenities. We can increase the visibility of our business district, make facade improvements, support our businesses with facade improvements, storefront improvements, evaluate parking policies on Lighthouse Avenue and Old Monterey so that we can encourage and foster parking space turnover for business customers. Affordable housing, mixed use opportunities where available, that includes city owned land. We may want to look into potential coordination with major institutions. These are optional. There's no way to force it, but organizations can volunteer to participate in what's called payment in lieu of taxes or pilots. So examples are nonprofits that help provide supplemental funding to help support services and infrastructure because they don't provide property tax revenue to the city. Expansion in support of the old Monterey's farmers market, incorporating public art murals, path of history expansion, evaluating the Alvarado Street streetscape, street closures and special event utilization is on the list. Continuing our partnerships with California State Parks on Custom House Plaza. Potentially look at how do we attract high wage industries such as marine sciences, agricultural technology and defense, redevelopment and adaptive reuse of underutilized properties. Continuing to collaborate with business associations and partners such as the Chamber and Central Coast Small Business Development Center. And then last but not least, on the threat side, we do have more competition from neighboring cities on lodging stock. We know that communities like Carmel have dedicated tax revenue streams exclusively for promotion that we don't. There's sales tax leakage. There's purchase of private land that by nonprofit organizations. There's competition from other destinations like we talked about that are planning conference center facilities. There's some economic uncertainty nationwide and its impact on the local tourism industry. The impact of internet. We have sea level rise, coastal erosion, and then challenges with the regulatory environment. And especially at the state government level, every time, you know, we try to support efforts. You know, we have agencies like the Coastal Commission that provide limits on outdoor seating that become prohibitive for us. And just the overall high cost of doing business on the Monterey Peninsula. But the good news is that we have really strong community partners that we look forward to engaging with and, and having dialogue on this draft economic development strategy. Those include commercial and business stakeholders. They include neighborhood associations with business districts nearby and they include community and industry partners. All of you have received some letters from different groups that have already expressed an interest, having read the draft study. Monterey Salinas Transit is one of them, the Monterey Bay Fisheries Trust and others. But here's just a smattering of some of the local organizations and their logos that we look forward to connecting with and discussing. Yes, Dr. Barber? Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Barber, for, that is the, the glaring one that we should have included. And glad you, glad you mentioned it. Thank you.
And can somebody reiterate the question? I think Dr. Barber's mic is off.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I just asked about on the weaknesses on the SWOTs, about adding the lack of water to the weaknesses because that would go kind of hand in hand with the housing individually, just putting it down for lack of, lack of water.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. That's, that's very helpful. So we'll go through, I'll, I'll try to keep this brief. We're almost at the end of the presentation, the draft strategies and tactics. So based on the first goal, how do we remain competitive? Looking at different ways that we can incentivize hotel and lodging modernization through tax incentives, updated design guidelines. When you look at the attachment in the report, you'll notice it's set up that it has a table where each tactic also includes information about the level of complexity, who might be responsible and who might play a support role for each tactic. For purposes of this presentation, I will not include, I'm not including those details so that we can get through the presentation, but I do want to mention that verbally for all of you. The other strategy here is to continue to enhance our retail and business districts. So opportunities in facade improvements, storefront maintenance, facade improvement grants, stable funding for placemaking and infrastructure, whether that's BIDs or EIFDs, cleanliness of downtown, addressing parking policies, improving public transit, bike lanes, walkability, infrastructure that includes wayfinding, lighting and public art. The other strategy is to leverage branding, marketing and special events. We have an opportunity to help coordinate between business associations and Sea Monterey for destination storytelling and promoting business districts. Coordinating pop-up markets, public art sidewalk events, special, having a strategy, an actual strategy for special events that may include street closures and, and maximizing that so that we have support from the business community as well. Funding mechanisms for funding restaurant promotion. Reviewing our citywide wayfinding plan and coordinating those efforts with Caltrans. Having some feedback on how can we make Alvarado Street pedestrian friendly and options for street closures? We know that's been an interest of the city councils. The second goal, sustainable redevelopment. We have a few strategies or proposed strategies to share. Prioritizing underutilized properties for redevelopment. That includes reviewing vacant or underutilized properties in the specific plans to identify potential redevelopment sites. Designating specific districts for targeted efforts. It's important that we prioritize and identify what is most important to council. Is it downtown? Is it Lighthouse Avenue? Is it North Fremont Street? Incentivizing redevelopment and reuse. We can do that by identifying and implementing funding tools that include EIFDs, the, the, the TIFs, the CRIAs, the redevelopment opportunities and other tax increment financing mechanisms. And then, yes.
Through the chair, could you read out what the initials are so that our public that's watching?
No problem.
Will understand what these acronyms are.
Sure, I apologize. So EIFD is the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. So that's a new mechanism. CRIA is the Community Revitalization Investment Authority. And then TIFF is a term for tax increment financing. So a similar tool to what we had pre redevelopment. And then streamlining, streamlining permitting and entitlement processes for adaptive use. Another strategy is to support or continue to support mixed use and innovation. How do we support office building conversion to affordable housing? And also how do we, we haven't done this yet, but you know, activate temporary uses of vacant space. Some cities do that really well for art and other, other purposes. The third goal here, business attraction, retention and promotion is to actually establish a business retention and attraction program. There are some communities that have economic development offices that have a business visitation program that conducts surveys regularly and tracks business concerns that provides technical assistance through the Small Business Development Center, the SBDC, that tracks, we do this now, we continue to track sales tax and business license data. We do that at least every quarter. Attending trade shows to promote Monterey for retail and business destination. Today actually marks the fourth day of the ICSC at Monterey Conference. It's the International Centers of Shopping, International Council of Shopping Centers, ICSC. They're at the conference center today, hundreds of economic development professionals and retailers. And it, Vice Mayor Garcia spoke introductory remarks on behalf of council a few days ago. A, a great type of program that should we have an economic development manager should go to. Luckily, we had Jenna Aldretti, who is our property manager. She went and learned a few things from, from the program. Those are the types of trade show and opportunities for us to be more actively involved in business promotion. And then also tracking and mapping business vacancies and working with brokers. And then also another strategy is to strengthen the collaborative partnerships and business promotion, partnering with the Chamber, partnering with business associations in the joint marketing campaigns, working with the Monterey County Hospitality Association, MCHA, the Monterey, the Monterey Bay Defense Alliance, MBDA, hosting business forums and industry specific conferences and network, networking events targeted to healthcare, technology, defense, continuing to support Sea Monterey and our business districts, continuing to engage with Federal Realty, Del Monte Center and Henry Row Company, two of our largest business oriented private land, land owners. And then also launching a Shop Monterey campaign, something as simple as that. Some other strategies, supporting workforce development and talent attraction through educational institutions. We have a good track record on apprenticeships and internships and work-study pipelines. But there are always more opportunities to work with CSUMB and also Monterey Peninsula College. And then continuing investments in the conference center. Our partnership with Sea Monterey on sales and marketing efforts for the conference center is key and continuing to fund the repair and replacement of equipment and amenities at the conference center to ensure that it remains competitive. And coordinating event bookings and sales of the meeting space with nearby hotels so we can maximize stays. The fourth goal is on economic diversification. This is an opportunity here to attract technology and innovation companies. Ryan Ranch is a great opportunity. We could, some cities go as far as promote and support incubator space and partnerships between the military and defense sectors that allow for dual use technology in defense, cybersecurity and innovation. The Naval Innovation Center was supposed to be designed to do that, but we know now that the funding is uncertain on the, on the nick. Promoting Monterey for veteran entrepreneurs, expanding the blue economy in partnerships with the aquarium and the Monterey Bay Aquarium Research Institute. And then working with Montage Health and attract medical research. And then fifth is the Affordable Workhouse, Workforce Housing Solutions. And that means that our recommendation is to continue to implement that city's housing elements to support those efforts and find ways to support employer-led housing initiatives, whether that's master leasing, employer-funded housing stipends or housing co-ops. There's an opportunity for Monterey Peninsula College to identify on-campus housing options for students that can help then allow for more supply for our workforce. So we're on our final slide, our timeline and next steps. So this is our draft economic development strategy before you this afternoon. What we hope to do in the next several months into the spring and summer is to conduct focus group and town hall meetings with business associations and industry partners to gather feedback on the draft strategy, see if they have any new ideas, other things that we may have missed. We know this, as long as the 40-page report is, it's not, it's not complete and needs needs more refinement. And then potentially engage with an economic development firm so that we can refine some of the strategies such as the tax increment financing that is more complicated and may need consultant support. Our goal is to bring later this year, a final economic development strategy to council for adoption. And that would then include a more detailed implementation schedule about what are the goals, what are the priorities, what are the strategies, what are the tactics, who's involved, who's the primary, who are, what are the players that are in the support role? What are the key performance indicators? What are the KPIs? And then also, how do we staff it? I know one of the items council has stated is we need to have economic development staff. And one of the thoughts is we would have a strategy and based on the strategy, we would then identify who and how we ideally staff our economic development program. So with that, that is my presentation. I was hoping to be under 40 minutes, but I've, I'm at the 58-minute mark, so I apologize. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, Nat, and thank you to everyone who took a part in putting together all this awesome information. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with council, is bring it out to the public for questions and comments and then bring it back to us for feedback and questions. Is that all right? All right. So we're going to take it out to public comment. For those of, those folks who are here present, if you would like to offer public comment on this specific item, on the draft 2025 economic development strategy and strategy, if you would please stand to the left of the podium. We'll also open it up for folks on Zoom to go ahead and raise their hands. We'll give them a moment to do that. And so I only have two folks here in the chambers, three. Okay. Awesome. And we're going to count down for folks on Zoom. Five, four, three, two, one. We have two. All right. If, yeah, we can start in the council, we'll go with three minutes. Yep, go ahead.
Mayor, city council, city staff, thank you for this opportunity in presenting this information in a clear format. It's excited to see an interest in having a strategy to think about the economic future of Monterey. My name's Monica Law. I'm with the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. We hope to be part of the many business associations you identified to being partners. I think one area we can also consider is we have some aging business owners and so opportunities to create bridges and connect them with entrepreneurs. I had the opportunity to be in Sacramento yesterday for a reveal of an economic study on women businesses in California. They're significant. When the chamber, California chamber did the study, there's very little research on it. So this is a great opportunity for, to have these entrepreneurs and smaller businesses come in the area. So that could be one area to identify as well. Emphasizing medical research, perhaps working with montage. The word is geriatric, support and innovation. And if it's privately funded, hopefully that would be taxpayer, tax-based, property tax based income, as well as collaborating, as we understood, with the military and other tech industries. We love our hospitality, but we do have to diversify. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Janine Chikarad. I'm the managing director at the Portola Hotel and Spa. And I got to Monterey about 17 years ago and, and to the Portola, which was in disrepair and along with the Monterey Conference Center. And I was told no over and over again that that would never happen and we would never recreate it. And lo and behold, we had the momentum, we got it done and we're reaping the benefits today. I want to encourage all of you to dream big. And what I mean by that is you, you need someone from the outside to come in with, with vision. I mean, I appreciate the fact that you're, you're considering bringing on people to be part of city staff. But when you look at the outside and you bring somebody in that has, you know, done redevelopment in places and knows how to, you know, to, to, to finance it and how to bring the community together and all of that. And I've also seen things that we've never would even imagined in this destination. You know, I see three big assets here in Monterey that has huge potential. The first is Heritage Harbor. I sat down with Julie Packer years ago and had a conversation with her about Heritage Harbor and, and she is completely open. You get the right person to come in with the right vision that goes out and finds that right person to come in and reinvent Heritage Harbor and my God, finish that parking garage and the bridge and all of that, that'd be, that'd be tremendous. You look at Alvarado Street and I know that the residents would love it as much as all of our local businesses, but you know, to have that Santana Row feel where you're walking and, and, and being able to upgrade those storefronts and attract major retailers, that's another huge opportunity. I look at Wharf too, and I don't know why, it's always on my mind, but there's a, there's a hotel on a pier down in Southern California. And I thought, wouldn't that be awesome if you had that hotel on the pier on Wharf too? But you know, I'm, I'm just a hotel operator. I don't know the answers, but I just see huge opportunity for the city Monterey and I commend you all for, for exploring this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say, I can hear on Heritage Harbor, that's where we're off at stat and huge opportunity, huge. No problem. Thank you, council, vice mayor, mayor. Hope you're enjoying Hawaii. Plan to be there into the summer myself. I, I'm Rob O'Keefe. I'm the president and CEO of see Monterey and I'm, I really appreciate, I can't applaud loud enough for the conversations that's taken place here. I just came back from a conference myself. By the way, Councilman Garcia, thank you so much for the comments you made to ICSC. That means so much to the people who attend. It leaves them with something and it's, it's very special. So I encourage that anytime you can do. And I bring it up because I just came back from a conference where they had 300 people like me get together, the CEO summit destination international in Savannah, Georgia. And it was my first time to Savannah, Georgia, beautiful city. And I couldn't help but think about it. And they actually told the story, one of the speakers who's an architect told the story of how Savannah developed. And now it was several decades ago, maybe a little bit more than that, someone like Nat got up and did a presentation like he just did now for this group to talk about the possibilities, to talk about the planning that go into those possibilities and dreaming big, like Janine said. The power of possibility is immense and the plan, the master plan that's being discussed here this evening is, is tremendous in terms of opportunity. We published a study last fall called MCT 2030 Monterey County Tourism, it's very clever, 2030, because it looks out to the end of the decade and it talks about the power of possibility and the need for planning. And we put a lot of time into it. We did a resident sentiment study, which is in the report that, that Nat put out in the, in the greater detail. Good news, people get it, that tourism is very important. What needs help with is they want to see the specific benefits. They need to know that and that's something for all of us to work on. So what we talk about in this plan, and I brought, actually came up in the headline today, I'll have to get beeped. And New York Times headline about the Trump slump looms as foreign visitors rethink travel to the U.S. We've got real critical issues right now that we need to deal with and we are going to do that with your investment and with the others that we work with. But we've got huge opportunities. International travelers are incredibly important. They usually stay longer, do more and spend more. We get that one more night that we're always looking for and we need to encourage that. We've got big pillars to work with. We've got in the next few years, Super Bowl, U.S. Men's Open, FIFA, Olympics. We're going to get a piece of all of that. We're going to get our fair share of all of that, but it's going to take us leaning into those opportunities and really working together. And I see, I think what Nat sees, and I think what I see, what you all see is just immense opportunity. And I'm here to say we're committed to working with you more and better than we ever have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And we close the opportunity for comment, but we'll go ahead and allow it, small group. Thank you.
I was hoping you would. Thank you very much. Rick Aldinger, this afternoon, I'm going to represent Monterey County Hospitality Association. And I really just want to support the comments made by the speakers before me here this afternoon. Monterey County Hospitality Association is pleased to, to see the, this vision being discussed and brought forward. And we look forward to having a seat at the table in the discussions as this moves forward. You know, others have said it, tremendous opportunity here. And I think a lot of it's going to hinge on collaboration and inclusion with all of our stakeholders. And I'm thinking particularly in this case of our residents. I think that there's, there's so much opportunity to improve what Monterey is and what Monterey does for both our visitors and our residents. And I think one place we fall short often is not collaborating and bringing in the residents into the discussion when we talk about economic development and especially tourism and visitation, often seen as something that is a bad thing in the eyes of many of our residents. And I think there's again, an opportunity here to bring them into the fold and, and get them to understand and be part of the discussion and, and really know that what benefits our visitors coming to Monterey also benefits each and every one of the residents of Monterey. There's, there's so much available to us because of tourism and because of our visitors and that industry. And I think that we fail to stress that and, and really bring the residents in to have them understand that that's, that's really is the case. There's so much they get from the fact that we promote visitation and tourism and we all benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go over to Zoom now.
First up, calling a telephone caller with the last three digits, eight, three, seven.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sweet to hear you.
This is Brian Rosen. We all like good economy and to live comfortably, but what's it going to do to Monterey? There's so many cars already, the lack of water, traffic congestion, air pollution. This could be going down a very dismal path. I mean, do we really need giant, giant new hotels and so forth? I mean, it's very, there's other things beside money, you know? The love of money is the ruin, is the root of all evil. And what, hello? Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah. What profit if a man, if he gains the whole world, loses his soul? So let's remember that other things beside money. And if you're going to do this big development, then you really need to bring the train back. The old city councils under Mayor Albert, it was their official policy. He would write me letters personally and say, this is our official policy to bring the train back. That was a long time ago. But more and more tourists without mitigation, more and more cars, and you need to plant a lot of trees to make up for all the emissions, a lot of big trees that are going to become fast-growing big trees. And otherwise, economics is a very destruct, can be a very destructive force. I mean, there's a lot of people, the people at the top make money, but all the service workers get paid very low wages, illegal workers being paid very low wages. And it's not necessarily a good thing unless it's done in a very socially, environmentally responsible manner. That benefits everybody, not just the, the business owners, you know? And, you know, so the hotels, you know, you got the owner, they make a lot of money, the Monterey Aquarium, but what about all the workers underneath? How are they being treated? And so I'm really concerned about this. We end up having a slave state. We already, the way things are going under Trump, we're getting there. And I saw veteran, you know, the veteran at Fisherman's Wharf, nobody cared about them. These veterans are becoming homeless and Trump is causing losses, so many veterans benefits. And the homeless are something business people don't want, even veterans. Nobody cared about this veteran down at Fisherman's Wharf. And businesses have their place, but they need to be kept in check. They can do great damage. So you really need to plant lots of trees and be environmentally, socially responsible and not just lip service because the big money has a lot of power and we need you to counter that. Yes, we all need money, but we also need fair treatment for the earth, for each other, for our fellow men and women. And so that's my comment. Please don't try to get rid of homeless to, because a lot of them are veterans and where are they going to go? Every other city doesn't want them. Please have, please bring back the train or otherwise don't do the plan. The train will be a big boon. Without the train, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you. And our last speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine, zero, two. There was another hand that went up later after the deadline, so we won't be calling on that person.
This is, good afternoon, this is Nina Beatty.
I'm sorry, he, since we reopened, we reopened public comment, so.
Okay, all right. This is the last speaker then, but go ahead.
Okay. I'm, I see this as aggressive fast-track policymaking on what is only the council's fifth priority. A viable plan which financially and socially visits, benefits residents, small businesses and the city must start with an accurate assessment of the current situation and reality. This one lacks history and Monterey certainly doesn't need LA or San Jose style economic development. I had a couple of questions. Are your military employee numbers just staff instructors and administrators or does that number include the soldiers and officers that are students? Secondly, Montage Health is not the center of healthcare for the region. Then Salinas Valley Health has a huge campus in Salinas and facilities here. There's Nativodat Hospital, there's the Santa Cruz healthcare system up in Santa Cruz. These are overstatements and that makes me worried about your overall plan. High room rates are a large problem with the TOT problem. That's the fault of the hospitality industry, forcing people to use other cities or just do day trips. Hospitality has to fix that problem or you'll never be able to do it, no matter how many bells and whistles you float as far as street lamps and things. The lack of property tax and business tax from military facilities, as you note, is a problem. Reducing the number of non-property tax businesses should be a strategy for the city. Also to incentivize sales tax generating businesses, particularly aimed at residents in accessible areas such as downtown, reducing the number of non-sales tax generating businesses. Downtown used to be sales tax generating and attractive to locals and visitors, a vital place for people to go for entertainment, for goods. Now it has very little interest. The high commercial rates in downtown have caused more and more offices reducing sales tax and that's on the fault of the downtown property owners and the city for not protecting local small businesses. I recall the pub owner that came for, asking for help from the city council and nothing was done when he, there was an interference with other uses in the area. Downtown was cratered by the Del Monte Center, but more so by the big box stores in Seaside and Marina and San City. There's very little appealing retail. So shopping locals should be a campaign for Monterey and online purchases should be discouraged. If you shop Amazon, you're not shopping in the local businesses. A street closure would not help the situation. I want to highlight that tech and military are both dirty industries and we've already been seeing the harm. We have a Ford or Superfund site. We have radioactive contamination at a neopost graduate school, which is also destroying the forest there. It's not protective of the environment. Revenue has, does the city collect a tax on aquarium tickets? That must be something, I mean, all the tourists that come through the area and impact the roads and everything, there should be a tax that benefits Monterey, a tax on second homes so that the housing prices become more, at least this could offset or provide money for homeless shelters. Reapportionment of property tax dollars is something the county is pursuing. Has the city jumped on board? Six cents out of every dollar is absolutely absurd. And I have many other suggestions on what to do as far as realities. We are in a dire situation in Monterey.
All right, thank you. And our last speaker is a telephone caller with last three digits, seven, zero, five. You'll need to dial star.
Hello. Thank you, city council and mayor for taking my call. Really appreciate it, very fair of you. This is Lorna Moffett and my concern is, I read in the draft that tourism remains and will continue to be the top economic. that tourism remains and will continue to be the top economic driver of the city of Monterey. And it should be the environment and the protection of our nature should be the first economic driver of the city of Monterey. Fisherman's Wharf is a stark reminder of how barren and uglified our city planning has become. Twenty-four huge beautiful trees were sacrificed for a blacktop nightmare. And that's 24 pounds of CO2 that those trees sucked in yearly. And money seems to be the only driving force instead of protecting our bay from the traffic and pollution that's being welcomed so heartily. That parking lot should be filled with trees. In fact, thousands of eucalyptus and cypress trees should be planted all along our coast to cool the bay as a mitigation effort for all the traffic that we already have and are now welcoming. Cypress and eucalyptus are very tolerant to the salt. So that's what should be planted. And instead, you know, we're inviting more pollution and that pollution, traffic is rotting our brains out with Alzheimer's and dementia. That's now a significant cause of Alzheimer's and dementia is traffic pollution. So I recommend that you keep our bay first and mass transit, not a served project that destroys our most important dunes of California, but a real mass transit solution like the train and the value drivers that discourage driving and make it easier to take the bus and the bikes and walking. So please keep our bay healthy and plant trees everywhere, on every sidewalk. Big glorious global warming sucking trees. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you all for sharing your comments. We're going to bring it back to the council. Anybody want to start us off with, please go ahead?
So I really appreciate all the comments from the hospitality and from neighbors and everybody else. I think this is a good thing to move forward. I think it's about balance. And I think that's looking at making sure that we have the environmentally and social responsibility. You still can have that and corporations do it all the time. So I think you can still have the environmental and social responsibility as we move forward economically to make these decisions. So I think this was a good start at the draft. I do agree, it's funny because I had already written down the notes. I do agree, we do need to make sure that residents are part of the focus groups in the town halls. I think that needs to make sure that the residents and neighborhood associations are part of that. I think that the business retention and attraction team would be a great idea. I think that's being proactive, especially being able to take advantage of, just like they were talking about. I've just gone to another event that talked about all of the sports events that are coming forth that are going to be opportunities for, you know, all over in California being one of them. And definitely Monterey being a tourist destination, that this is definitely an opportunity. And that goes all the way out to 2036. So being able to incorporate that as we would be proactive to learn more and to lean into it to prepare, I think would be very smart for us to do. But I think it's a great start.
It was a great start. Very, very nice report, Nat and staff. I wanted to throw out an idea triggered by Ms. Law, Monica Law, when she mentioned the healthcare expansion. And I'm wondering if there might be interest in the Ryan Ranch area of an adult behavioral health center. Now, I understand that Ohana was a gracious, gracious gift from Ms. Birdie Elliott. And we'd need a philanthropist, but what we need is a behavioral health center up there in Ryan Ranch with doctors and nurses, a treatment center, some housing, some affordable housing up there. And try to address all these social problems that we're having with some economic expansion. And I totally agree with Mr. Eldinger that the residents need to be included. I'm sure Nat and Mr. Usler would never leave them out. But we do want this to be collaborative. We do want to do it together. And if we don't get the buy-in from the residents, they will push back in terms of the environmental impact and their concerns about traffic. So we do, we do need to pay attention to that issue. I personally would love to see the train. I don't know that it's going to happen. And I think I was the one that threw out shop Monterey and now I would change it to my Monterey and really give it some ownership and have it be a pride of Monterey, buying here, eating here, recreating here. I know my head has spun around over 15 years and I'm very proud to shop in Monterey and eat Monterey and spend my money in Monterey. So, thank you. Oh, one more thing. You, you registered as a low complexity. Oh, I misread it. It's low complexity. It's not low priority. To enhance the cleanliness of downtown sidewalks and facilities, that's low complexity, not low priority?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Because I think that's a real high priority. I think it might be an easy fix. I know there's concerns about drainage to the sea, but Carmel takes care of those by catching the water and treating it so it doesn't go into the bay. But I think we, we really need to focus on a brighter, cleaner downtown.
Thank you. And Council of Raj to, to also clarify on the table where we have the strategies and tactics. We initially, when drafting this, I included the priorities. But upon further reflection, we want to gather feedback from residents in the community on and all of you on what the priorities are. It's not our role to prioritize. We have a general sense on what level of complexity each of the strategies is. But we're looking forward to prioritizing all of these recommendations. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm glad you touched on that point because I was wondering as you were going through them. But that makes perfect sense because that's just a start. I would like to go back in order if I could and start with goal one. If you could go back to the slides, because it's a draft, we have an opportunity to give you some contributions. Great start. Really appreciate this. The framework makes sense. In your goal slide one, and I know several of these slides have a couple of different pages. Okay, next slide on goal one, next slide. You've got a list here, leverage branding, marketing, special events, all makes sense. Review citywide wayfinding plan and coordination with Caltrans. But I think that's narrow. And I would just suggest it's not just Caltrans, but it's actually other stakeholders. It's the downtown. It's all the businesses. It's wherever we have wayfinding signs. It's the connectivity between the waterfront, the conference center, uptown. So Caltrans just kind of tells me that's a freeway issue. And I don't think that's the intent. That's probably important to have that. But I think the other line is all stakeholders need to participate. And let's talk about the wayfinding and use that as a mechanism to connect the foot traffic because we want to enhance pedestrian travel rather than enhancing vehicular travel. Next to goal three, if you could grab that one. Goal three. So I don't see the Chamber of Commerce in anywhere in goal three. And maybe it's just, and I know you're talking about, if you go to the next slide on goal three, I don't see anywhere in here the Monterey Chamber of Commerce. So I just want to call that out. I'm glad that Monica Law was here. I know it's not intentional, but we need to make sure that it's listed continuing participation in the industry groups. We're talking about business. That's a natural connection. We need to have the chamber front and center with that and certainly a participative partner.
Sorry, I see the first bullet point actually contains chamber. So to.
So I'm, okay, my apology. And it's on the top line, so I retract that.
But, but to your credit, it's not Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce and, you know, we, we didn't.
Thank you for being a good proofreader on that. But yeah, Monterey Chamber of Commerce. I'm glad it's in the first line. But many of the other stakeholders that participate as well. The next one is goal five. You have, you mentioned, well, let me get this one first before you rotate the slide. You mentioned that goal five on the agenda is light. And what it says is affordable workforce housing. That's the proposed economic development goals. And develop strategies to address the current lack of workforce housing affordability that hinders the attraction and retention of, of talent in all industries. I think that's very important and vital. What would be wrong with us connecting the housing element? Because I think so much of that housing element, it almost needs to be a reference here so that we pull forward so many of the other parts of the housing element. So I think that five should make reference to an expanded process that we have. And it's basically a robust state approved housing element. So I think we should champion that in, in number five goal, affordable workforce. And the other thing is one.
Ed, sorry, real quick on that first one, on that last one. It is one of the strategies is to continue to implement the city's housing element in efforts to support affordable housing.
As I read this, it just, I don't know, it just doesn't seem to gravitate to the, the impact that I'm looking for. And I know this is just a draft and we'll, we'll have more of this, but I just think it, in the staff report, it doesn't even include it, but the slide it does. So under five, it isn't really there on the staff report. Unless I'm missing something on the staff.
You know, it may not be in the staff report. We included it, I believe, in the, and I think this is an opportunity, it's in the report, the strategy on page 34. But it's, it's an area where I think we can expand upon, like you said.
Yeah, I think it needs to be front and center.
Yep.
Yeah. If you go to the next couple of slides here under five. Next slide. KPI for the public viewing. What is a KPI?
Yep. Key performance indicator.
Okay. So I think when, as we're doing these strategies and presentations, I think we should spell it out. And then in the parentheses, KPI, because the public needs to know what that is. And so I would say that to all the acronyms as well. On the public engagement, I'm really glad that so many people mentioned it. And thank you to Rick Aldinger who brought that up. And I think any, any effort to have a very robust, dynamic and diverse economic effort needs to include the outreach to our community. So I think it's already been said by many and Jean, you covered it. But I think it's not only the outreach to the community, but it's finding the way that this document becomes theirs, that they are participating. So it's not that we are just collaborating and we deliver it, but we want the outreach. We want the education. We want their engagement and we want them to experience this for this to be part of their community effort. So I know as we get further into this, there'll be some strategies to do that with the public. But there's some great ideas out there and I'm not the smartest guy. So I need to hear from the community to have their suggestions about how they can not only engage, but help us contribute in areas that they think that we are not as economically vibrant as we should be. And we might be missing some things. So I look forward to some of those conversations. There's one more little tiny thing that I think is not yet missed. It's not yet defined, but maybe it's kind of subtly there is, I think we need to identify how we're leveraging our natural cultural and historical assets. Because as Rob was talking, I know C Monterey's big effort is we want travelers, but we want considerate, friendly and absolutely in tune with the natural resources. So we don't have the debris, the excess traffic, the, you know, the caustic use of our natural resources. So somehow I think we need to have that be part of this. And that we are championing that this is a great place to park your car and do lots of things. And that there's a lot of economic drivers from that. And so I think there's an opportunity to be a little more.
Responsible tourism piece.
Well, tourism piece.
Sustainability a little bit.
And our natural resources that we know people come to. I mean, we know we have oceanfront activities. We have, this is the whale capital of the world. We have the whale fest that's going to have a proclamation on Tuesday. We have daily trips on the wharf. We have seafaring activity. We have fishing. We have museums. We have military, you know, we have all of that. So somehow that's got to get captured where we are making sure that we are including that as part of our economic concern. That's it.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and share some points here and then I'll pass it on to our mayor to wrap us up. So I'm very excited to see this item come to council because this is one of the items that in a way motivated me to put my name in the hat for the appointment back in 2022, living in District Four, near North Fremont. And, and having those conversations with neighbors and friends about the, the year over year, the, the way that our, our business corridor looks year over year. So to see this finally start taking a little shape, you know, and it's preliminary steps for me is very exciting. I think there's great potential here, not only for North Fremont or District Four, but for the entire city as, as we've seen here. So thank you so much for the presentation. A lot of information. But I'm just going to go here point by point. If you could, Nat, bring up the graphic, the infographic at the very beginning, if it's readily available. If not, I can just speak on it.
Sure. Which one would you like?
It was the, I think it was one of the only infographics on, on like slide one or two. It was, it was early on. Not that one. It was the one that was describing more, that one. Yes. Thank you. So I, I think this, this graphic is very appropriate because economic development is, is, I think, complex and it can cover a wide variety of areas. And the way that I heard it, and I may, may have misinterpreted the intent of the message here. But the way that I heard it described, heard this slide described is that in essence, you have, you know, economic development tools and, and businesses that generate a certain revenue that then pay for all the amenities that we have in our city. But I would also add to this that when we have a planned out strategy for our city with all the amenities we have, that also inspires a healthy economic development. So it could work in both directions is what I'm saying, right? It's not just necessarily that, yeah, we support our businesses, which we want to do, right? We, we provide tools to, for them to thrive so that then we have these assets in our city. But our assets in our city then become that motivation, that, that inspiration for other businesses or, or other opportunities for economic development. So that's what I wanted to share about that slide. other opportunities for economic development. So that's what I wanted to share about that slide. A few points about the, the content in general. Throughout the presentation, for me, it, it felt like there was a higher emphasis or, or focus on hospitality and, and businesses along current business corridors. And I think that's great. It needs to get included in the strategy. But going back to what I just mentioned on the slide, I think there, there are many more opportunities that we can look at and explore a, a little bit deeper, and I'll get to that in, in my following points. I like that there was mention about military installation, education, healthcare as, as economic drivers. Mention about T O T, sales tax, property tax, measures S and P, business license tax, Prop four. I, I really enjoyed the, the mention of that. I think that the economic developer who ends up in that position, I think, could play a critical role in trying to, to shape how that could look for our community as these funds become available through our Prop four. I think the, moving on to the next point, I think the, on, and, and you don't have to go to these pages, I'll, I'll just cite them. Packet page number sixteen, there's a graph there, revenue source graph. I think that, that also in general shows us the need to further diversify. You know, the, the assets that we're utilizing at the moment, what we, what we're trying to maximize and that kind of thing. Yes, thank you. And then packet page twenty-seven, the existing goals focus around tax revenues, business development, housing, public safety. I like how that information was presented on one page, and then the, the following, you have the proposed goals, which focus on zoning, land use. And, and you spoke a little bit more about that during the presentation, not necessarily on the report, or maybe I missed it, but I think those are key points also, because again, with economic development, I, and, and this has happened to me where when I think about economic development, I, I, my mind quickly goes to businesses, right? But I think there's an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper here in terms of zoning and land use. How do we leverage those tools to further our economic development? Infrastructure, financial management. Last meeting, we had a discussion about pension. So I think with, with the seasoned and, and more highly skilled economic developer, that person could also perhaps play a role in advising how we approach our, our challenges with pension. And then there was mention about special districts as well. So all that to say as well that I, I think it'd be good to explore additional strategies where the economic developer can work closely with a variety of our city departments to maybe even identify opportunities that we're not even talking about here. So I, I think that, that could be a, another good opportunity to look at. I als, looking at the timeline, also think that there could be a little bit of a, maybe shift, trying to really think about when we would ideally want this, this person to fill that role. To really get us going from, from the, from the beginning and, and, and really be with us right from the beginning of the strategy. And I think that's, that's important because you don't necessarily want to start something with, with one person and then I think shift it over to, to another. And, and I wanted to address, I think it was Brian's point that there's an exploration of, of other, oh yeah. So, so to Brian's points, I think this, this exercise is an exploration of other paths that our city could pursue in trying to maximize our, our efforts with economic development other than hospitality. Again, you know, it's not like we're trying to choose one over the other, but I think it's just a matter of, of diversifying that portfolio and really identifying where those, those areas of opportunity really lie. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Mayor, would you like to?
Vice Mayor Garcia, if I can.
Sure.
Also add a great, great feedback. We, we appreciate it. And just to comment on, on your comment about businesses and community, I absolutely agree. You know, we have, it's, the businesses are also a place for our community members. It's a community asset as well. So just as much as businesses support infrastructure and public safety and the things that, the services that we provide as a city, they're also, like you said, inspired by, by business. So I, I wanted to acknowledge that. And also want to acknowledge that we are looking into the two different models. It's a in, in terms of hiring and bringing on an economic development professional. One approach is, like, like you said, we've, we've thought about and, and we may still do is bring someone on board so that they are part of the process on day one as we engage with the community and, and have them build the plan together. The other, some of the advantages is you, you get their buy-in, you bring someone on, they're engaged and they get to see the fruits of their labor and, and then not only be involved in planning, but implementation. The other option as part of our draft timeline we outlined is to bring someone on later. There's different types of economic developers out there, and some are very much focused on building relationships. Some are more focused on the retail environment. And so one thought is to first identify what the goals and the needs and the priorities are, and then try to find the economic developer who has that skill set for what our priorities and needs are to then run with it and implement. But the downside is they're not part of that process. So there's, there's pros and cons to both, but I appreciate your feedback.
Yeah, and I guess I'll just add one more bit here in terms of the timeline and the value of bringing in someone sooner. Possibly to align with the scheduling for like, say, for example, focus groups, right? And really be a part in, of designing that process and seeing it through. So, yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I'm going to try to get to this relatively quickly, but I have a lot to say. First of all, thank you staff for, for putting this together. To, to the point of the conversation where it was just that, the fact that we don't have somebody on that specifically focused on economic development. For us to be at this point is, is a great start, and I just want to give a lot of kudos to staff. I know particularly you Nat have been putting a lot of work in, and there's been other members of our team that have been helping to contribute to it. So, so many, many kudos there. And, and then I do have some, some questions. I'm going to defer those for now and, and some feedback on this strategy that has been developed, and I'll just connect with staff offline on how we can incorporate some of this, just to try to cut my list down a little bit. The C I P, I just kind of want to highlight this as something that really stands out to me, not just in this presentation, but I've heard this brought up before by staff. A typical city, their C I P ranges from thirteen to twenty-five percent of their general fund. In the city of Monterey, it's two percent. So we, we need to figure that out. That, that's, that's not acceptable. Especially seeing that we have nearly three hundred million dollars in deferred maintenance in the city of Monterey. If we're really truly thinking about taking care of the residents and the services that we provide to them, we need to make sure that we take a deep look in regards to how do we address that, that delta. And, and this isn't to say that we need to even get to thirteen percent, which is what we found to be minimum typical range, but to elevate it somewhere higher than two percent to, to really address that that need. And that's not just for residents, that's for our business community as well. So it's like that cyclical process. If we can't have healthy, sustainable infrastructure within the city, that's going to impact our tourism. That's going to increase the impact that our residents feel on tourism in our community. So we really need to focus on that line item specifically. I like the idea of activating temporary uses of vacant spaces. Gino, Councilor Garcia and I have worked with Night Market eight three one. They, they host their first Fridays in Sand City every first Friday of the month. They've approached us about trying to get something going in the city of Monterey, and, and we've chatted with staff about this. We haven't really gotten anywhere with that, but this is a, we're highlighting it in our strategic planning documents. So we really need to lean into that type of stuff. There was something else brought up in the report about supporting these kind of pop-up events, whether they be art shows or whatever that looks like. And I would just suggest that we, when we, when we look at developing whatever that strategy is around that point, that we, we look at being as liberal as possible. I know for an example that Captain and Stoker wanted to close down Adam Street. I believe this was last summer, and there was some resistance to that and, and some concern around them closing down Adam Street. We should be supporting their ability to be able to close down a certain block for a, a certain amount of hours during the day to create a vibrant downtown business corridor, whatever that looks like. So we need to be liberal in our approach to supporting businesses that are trying to do good economic development within the city of Monterey. I think everybody, every one of my colleagues highlighted this. When we're talking about these town halls, we need to include our residents on, on, on their needs and ideas. There was a couple of people that brought this up. And I'm going to come back to that actually in a second, because I don't want to lose. I have, I have certain sections in, in this, and I think I duplicated that. So I'll come back to that point here in a second. If there's any public dollars, and I don't quite know how those fun, those new funding mechanisms Nat that you brought up in your presentation, I don't know how those fit in in regards to being public dollars versus funding that's managed and controlled by the business districts. But I would just offer, if there's anything that is public dollars that the city is managing, I would hope that we have some type of requirement in place that requires some set of funding to be set aside for future rehab. And I think that's just been a big problem that I've seen since being with the city is we, we have funding available to do X thing. And then, but nobody's really thinking about the long-term sustainability of our infrastructure. And so if we're going to be giving public dollars out, we need to make sure that there's some kind of requirement associated with that so that we can maintain that, not just for today, but for the, for the long-term viability in the future. I would just ask that we use a little bit of caution when, when looking at the idea of charging for higher density zoning. At least for now, while we're looking at increasing housing stock. So I completely understand the, the benefits associated with that. And if there's a way that we can do it that doesn't kill the project, then I'm, I, I could be open to that. But I just want to make sure that we look at when we're, when we've been struggling with creating housing in the city of Monterey, we don't want to create further barriers by creating additional roadblocks. So just, I, I thought there. The, the whole conversation around sales tax leakage, one of the examples that was given in, in the the strategy was gas. We're seeing a lot of folks in gas stations, you know, people going out of town to, to get gas. Some of these leakages that we're seeing, maybe instead of looking at how do we stay competitive in that market, another way of looking at it is seeing it as an opportunity. And so this could be the gas example, the gasoline shops. For that example, we could look at how do we become more aggressive and building additional electric charging stations in the city, because we do know that as time goes on, the, our, our world is going to, is going to start having more electric vehicles. And so how do we develop that infrastructure within the city of Monterey? There was also a, 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 a challenge that was brought up in the report around the rising cost of infrastructure and public services. Again, I think this is another area that we just need to think about. How do we rethink we do business? So how do we focus on automation? How do we focus on streamlining? Just to give one example of what I mean by that, you know, with folks that are wanting to create ADUs on our property, how do we have modular ADU plans in place that we can provide to folks that make it easy for them to create ADUs on their property? There was in, in goal number three, it was the second strategy. It was just speaking about the idea of collaboration with our, with, with the chamber. I think just throwing out, I don't know how folks feel about this, but like a monthly joint newsletter with the chamber, I think could be really great to express that collaboration between our two sectors and, and really helping to highlight the business community, highlighting all the good things that are going on within the city of Monterey that, that are public hosted events. How do we help inform people? And it kind of goes to the point, and I, I like Gene's idea of my Monterey. But just that concept of shopping local and encouraging folks to, at, at the local level to, to be more aware of what's going on and how they can get plugged in and, and, and shop local. So then I'm, I'm going to try to close out here with some key areas of focus. There was an element that was talking about accessibility, walkability. I would want us to think about how do we make sure that we're finding that intersection with the ADA transition plan? And, and making sure that as we're looking at any type of redevelopment in our business corridors, that we that we make sure that it's, we're, we're also looking at our ADA transition plan and getting those items checked off that list as well, as we're working those areas. The idea of securing financing overall, whether it's the E I F D S or the C R I As or the C R Ds or the Prop four funding. All the different things that are identified in the strategy, I think we really need to make sure that we're leaning into those things so that we're helping to offset some of the funding associated with ramping up our econ, economic development strategy. There is one thing, and I can't remember who said this during public comments, but I, I think another area that we might want to focus on since goal number five is talking about affordable housing. We might, I would ask the council to consider looking at a vacancy tax. How, how can we establish that in a way so that we have a secure line of funding in the city of Monterey? That's focused on making sure that we're giving back when a unit is sitting vacant in the, in the economic loss that this, that the community has, that interconnectedness, when we have a true community that's, you know, that's, that's exists with a, a full and bustling neighborhood. I think that there's value that we can get off of that to, to help make sure that we're giving, giving financially back to meet some of our goals. I just want to highlight some, some items on hospitality because they are our bread and butter as it relates to our main source of revenue. And, and I am going to throw out one of my questions now, and it can be just more rhetorical, we can get back to it later with staff. But I'm wondering, can we look at how much of our overall budget is from tourism, from visitors versus residents? I know that we kind of saw it in some of the graphs in the strategy in the presentation earlier, but it would be good to look at it from an overall budget perspective. I think that there are some good strategies and, and I can't, who brought this up? I think Ed may, may have brought this up. We need to highlight those other assets that exist within our community to help make that deeper connection for the hospitality industry. The one thing that I think about is. The one thing that I think about is our our outdoor activities. So are there's trails in the city of Monterey, there's camping at Veterans Park, there's our beaches, there's the Path of History, there's the rec trail. I think we need to think about it from like an eco tourism perspective. So I think that there's a space for us to lean into there. And then there's this element of our the need for us to appreciate our our history and arts. I I want to lean into this idea of our of our history a little bit, and I've talked to some folks in the business community about this. I I still have it on my list to reach out to Mr. O'Keefe about this. So I apologize that I I haven't given you the heads up on this idea, but I want to pull in some major players in the hospitality industry, particularly around this idea of stay an extra day strategy that's associated with C Monterey with our history. There is so much history in the city of Monterey, and I know this to be fact, that when people come here, I don't, they don't, most folks don't really appreciate that or or know about it. And we have all these museums. I know that that's something that's been struggling as associated with our budget in the city of Monterey, particularly since coming back from COVID. And I think that there's a way that we can make appreciating our history more interactive and something that we can tap into more with our hospitality industry. And so if we can get some of the key players around the table and really develop a a a strategy around how do we make our our history, something that's appreciated more and not just coming to Monterey to go to the aquarium. Also, how can we explore opportunities related to the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary? The idea of making El Rado Street pedestrian only, a majority of the council had expressed that idea during our strategic planning meeting earlier this year, and I think we need to look at prioritizing that. We don't need to make it so difficult. I know that there's some concern from some of the businesses around doing that and what that means for foot traffic. But I think we just need to test it out. We need to put ourselves out there, try it out. You know, I don't know if like Memorial Day to Labor Day, trying that for a period of time to to really see what it what it's like. I think the sooner that we can do that, the the sooner that we'll be able to see if that's a long term strategy that we can implement and and give some assurance to our businesses on El Rado Street in regards to what the future looks like in downtown. I spoke to public art. I think we really need to highlight, and we need more public art so that people can appreciate. There was a artist that came to me and was talking about, I actually went on a walking tour with the artist and they were pointing out to me all these spots along the rec trail that they wanted to amass public art and make it an experience that people had as they were walking down the rec trail. And so I know that the idea of investing in public art may seem like lower priority, but we need to look at what the economic value in that is as well. Diversification, I'm not going to go into this too much, but I think that 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 area needs to be highlighted. And as important as hospitality is to the city of Monterey, I I think we really need to dig in deep in regards to the idea of diversification, so much so that we even maybe need to have a specific strategic planning discussion around diversification. Where are we going to find those areas of interest and then what it looks like for that follow up? Workforce development is a little bit absent in the strategic plan. So I would want us to focus, how do we include that in our planning? There was a quote that was given in this in this strategic plan, I think it was from MCHA, or I can't remember who exactly it was from, but it was a rising tide lifts all boats. That includes our workforce. And so how do we make sure that we're supporting our workforce so that they can do their jobs better, be more efficient, be better trained to to be, continue to be world class, like the standard that we expect in Monterey? Transportation, I think we need to make sure that we kind of almost have a separate line item strategy related to transportation. It's it's a significant part. Where do people work? Where do people live? And how do they get to and from these places? And I know that maybe oversimplifies it, but we really need to make sure that we're thinking about the the transportation strategy associated with all this. And then kind of getting back to that point that I was saying earlier around reaching out to our residents, this goes to Rick's point earlier. It's not just our residents, but we need to think about how do we, how are we being intentional around including those voices from non traditional groups and individuals? In regards, sorry, last two points, last two points, hi, hiring an economic development director. I think we need to do that now. The idea is to include that in our next year, next fiscal year's budget. I think we're only kicking the can down the road. And I think to all the points Gino shared earlier, getting on top of this sooner allows us to move this ball down the field. There's a lot of different priorities that are happening within the city of Monterey. And so to continue taking away our current staff's time from other projects and priorities, to continue to try to move this ball down the field. And then the additional point of having that person being able to be involved early and often creates ownership for them over it. So I think that's just a really important point. I would like staff to bring that back to the council for consideration about how do we, whatever the allocation might be, to get the funding for that, to get them going this fiscal year. I imagine that we probably won't be able to get them on until early next fiscal year anyways, but in the agenda report, we were talking about not having somebody come on until October.
Mayor, I'm I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but Councilmember Smith did leave the chambers. And under the teleconference rules, we need to have a majority of the city council quorum present to continue on. So the meeting will need to adjourn.
Okay, I guess I'm done talking then. Go ahead, Gina, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So hopefully you got good feedback. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.